Hey everyone, this is Dan at Decatur. We had a little bit of a technical hiccup. I just had to resend our Zoom link to all of our candidates. I apologize. I'm gonna extend the forum by five minutes just to make sure we give everyone the allotted time. These things happen, but we will get on the, uh, we will get on the forum shortly. So just bear with us, everybody. Thank you. Hello, everyone. This is editor and publisher Dan Wizenhunt. Welcome to the DeKalb County Commission Forum for District Two. I want to apologize. We meant to start this five minutes ago. We had a little bit of a technical glitch, but we fixed that. We're ready to roll. So this forum will actually run about five minutes longer. So it'll end about 10:05, 10:06ish. Uh, so that's what was going on there. Uh, I wanted to introduce our candidates for DeKalb County Commission District Two. They are Lauren Alexander. Lauren, how are you this morning?
I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us. Uh, Marshall Orson. Marshall, how are you this morning, sir?
Fine. And Dan, thanks to you and Decatur for hosting this event.
No problem. And Michelle Long Spears. Michelle, how are you this morning?
Doing great. Good morning, everyone. Again, I echo Lauren and Marshall. Thank you so much for hosting us.
Well, we're, thank you all so much for your interest in public service. It's important and we really appreciate it. Uh, so the way this is gonna work is each candidate is gonna get a two-minute opening and closing statement, and they're gonna have three minutes to respond to each question. If you have a question for our candidates, you need to create a Twitch account and give us a follow and put your question in the chat log there, uh, and we will, uh, do our best to get to the question in the time that we have. Uh, so we're gonna get underway here. Uh, we're gonna start the, the list is organized in the most unfair way possible, which is alphabetically. Uh, so we're gonna start, uh, with candidate, uh, Lauren Alexander, and then we're gonna rotate, uh, the responses to each question. So every candidate will have a quest, uh, chance to answer first and a chance to answer last and so on. Uh, so we're gonna start with Lauren Alexander. Uh, Lauren, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Okay, I'm ready. Well, thank you so much, Dan. So as you said, my name is Lauren Alexander and I'm running for DeKalb County Commissioner, District Two. And just as a reminder, this district covers Brookhaven, Decatur, a portion of City of Atlanta, and unincorporated North DeKalb. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Decatur, and I currently work as a consultant for the CDC's Division of the Birth, of Birth Effects as a Senior Project Manager. Most recently, as a member of the CDC's COVID-19 Task Force, I've sharpened my strategic planning, negotiation, and collaboration skills by having to work directly with each level of government, local, state, and federal concurrently to help codify the government's response to the pandemic. This coalescing of these skills feels a lot like good governance to me. And where I didn't plan on running for County Commissioner this year, uh, I was encouraged to do so when our incumbent Commissioner announced his retirement the week of qualifying. And at the urging of many in our community that admire and respect, asked me to run, I decided it was time to step up, represent this diverse and vibrant district on the DeKalb County Commission. This may be my first time running for office, but I've been serving the community in my entire professional and personal life. This community, which I love, has nurtured me. And public service and giving back is an important part, uh, for me. Gosh, Dan, I got there quickly. And listen, we need a rejiggering of the leadership in DeKalb County, and I am the person to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I know, I know it's two minutes short, but I promise you, we got a lot of substantive questions, so you get plenty of opportunities. Um, so next, we're gonna go to, uh, Marshall Orson. Marshall, you have two minutes, sir. Marshall, you're on mute, sir.
Sorry, trying to be etiquette of these meetings, so.
No worries.
Uh, good morning. Uh, thank you to all of you who are watching this morning. I'm Marshall Orson. I am running for the Board of Commissioners. I have spent the last 10 years serving on the Board of Education for DeKalb County in District Two. And I've been a 35-year resident of DeKalb County all of that time in unincorporated DeKalb. As a member of the Board of Education, I joined it, as many of you may know, at a time when we were in great crisis. And I will have to acknowledge that this moment, we are having some issues. Uh, but we were on the brink of losing accreditation. We were running a multimillion-dollar deficit. There were concerns about the district throughout the entire county. We have changed that around. Uh, we are fully accredited and are about to have that renewed for five more years with an incredibly high score. We are now running a hundred million dollar plus fund balance, so a reserve. So we are managing this, uh, from a healthy standpoint financially. Performance has been up, though there have been challenges related to pandemic. All this, though, has really prepared me for taking the step to the commission. Many of you may not know that the, the DeKalb County School District is the largest government in DeKalb. It has an annual budget right now of $2 billion. In normal times, it's 1.2 billion, but has been increased significantly. It's the second-largest employer after Emory with 15,000 employees. We're one of the, if not the largest landowners with 150 buildings, second-largest police force, second-largest transportation department in the state. We deal with all the issues that the County Commission deals with, sometimes at a much larger scale. So I am hopeful that this experience would be to the benefit for all the county, because I have had to take, uh, an organization, oversee an organization that was in great, great stress, and we have improved it significantly. And I believe that this would be really relevant to the County Commission and hope I can earn your vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Lauren Alexander. Oh, I'm on Echo. Okay. Uh, Lauren Alexander, uh, you have, uh, excuse me.
That was Michelle.
Michelle, I apologize. Michelle, uh, Long Spears, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I'm really excited to be here today. Thank you all for joining us. My name is Michelle Long Spears, and I'm running to be your next DeKalb County Commission District Two Commissioner. A little bit about me, I have been in DeKalb County since 2008. I've had the experience of living initially in unincorporated DeKalb, then the area that I lived in was annexed into Shambly, and then I remarried and lived, or currently live in Brookhaven. My professional career has gone back 20 years in the social sector. Started out with the YMCA, fast forward all the way to today, and my consulting practice called NP Voice, we're really focused on three areas. All of these areas translating very well to the role of a county commissioner. One, we help find resources, whether those be finances, uh, whether it be, uh, subject matter expertise or other resources. Secondly, we bring people to the table, the usual and the unusual suspects, the people who don't always agree. We find a common vision. We work collaboratively. We're open-minded, and we find a way to solve the challenge that we pulled our group together to address. And lastly, I help and I guide and I hold the hands of the partners I work with around implementation and execution to solve that problem. So we bring in whatever that intervention is. We are intentionable about how we roll it out. We solve the problem, then we evaluate to make sure that, did it work? Did that work? And what can we do next time to do better? The areas that I am strongly focused on with the DeKalb County Commission is to protect and preserve neighborhoods, because I believe everyone deserves a safe place to call home. I also am very focused on enhancing and improving county services, because everyone deserves to have their trash picked up on time, uncorrect sidewalks, pothole-free roads, and many quality-of-life expectations we need to have as residents. And lastly, access to your commissioner. Everyone in the county deserves to be listened to and have the ability to speak direct, speak directly with the commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, so we are gonna get into our questions. Um, each candidate is gonna have three minutes, so you're gonna have a little bit longer to answer these questions. Uh, and we are gonna start, uh, go down the list and start with, uh, Marshall Orson. So, uh, the fir-, and also, if you're watching, we got about seven people in here. That's great. Uh, if you missed this, you know, we're gonna upload this to YouTube as well, so you'll be able to watch it over the weekend. We're gonna post it to the website. So don't worry if you miss some or all this, we, you'll get a chance to watch it. Uh, so the same, the same timekeeping rules are gonna apply, but you're gonna have three minutes. Uh, Marshall Orson, starting with you. Uh, the one penny special purpose local option sales tax will soon sunset unless the DeKalb County voters approve its renewal. Are you in favor of renewing the SPOST? And if so, what will be your priorities for how the money should be spent? Three minutes.
Oh, well, thank you, Dan. Uh, and this is an area I have a lot of experience with from the school district. We have had a one penny special purpose tax, uh, for 25 years. Uh, unfortunately, even the monies we raise there don't always seem sufficient to address the multitude of problems that we have in DeKalb County. What we've learned is that these funds are incredibly important to take, uh, under advisement and then to address issues that are not solved by the regular budget of an institution. So with the school district, we have been building, uh, new schools or updating schools or fixing things like our transportation system. It's unfortunately an incredibly important source of revenue, and I would favor its renewal. With that said, different than the school district, which is almost all entirely about school buildings with some ancillary items like transportation and technology, the money raised for, for the county tax has more flexibility. We know that there are a lot of things related to infrastructure in the county that are deteriorating and are likely to continue to deteriorate, uh, in the coming years. We also know we have uneven service delivery, and that service delivery relates to things, for example, like streets and potholes. And so I think a process of figuring out what are the most important things to our constituents and figuring out a budget that's realistic and that builds into it a robust service delivery model. I mean, I think one of the problems with any of these special taxes that are dedicated to these kinds of projects is that people feel like they are short-changed as a result that the money is coming in, but they don't readily see the results, or they feel that the system that is created around them to address whatever problem, let's say potholes, just as a simple example, aren't really fixed on a regular basis. So I would undertake a couple steps. One, I think you need to have public engagement about the use of those monies. Uh, we've done that again on the school district. What are the priorities? And quite frankly, if you've been following the news, you know, we have had some issues about our board sticking to the priorities that we helped establish, not just from the community, but from the professional advisors who consulted with us over there. So I think we need community input. We also need professional advice. We need to understand how far the money will go and how realistic it is in terms of the amount of money we're getting and in terms of solving the problems we say we're doing. So I am in favor of renewing the sales tax, but I want us to have a very strong and very extensive both public engagement process and professional advisory process to come up with a priority list, and that we are, we also commit ourselves to investing in the resources around the delivery of the outcomes that we expect from that tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we're gonna ask the same question of Michelle Long Spears. Um, the one penny SPOST will soon, uh, sunset unless the DeKalb voters approve its renewal. Are you in favor of renewing the SPOST? And if so, what will be your priorities for how the money should be spent? You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, so yes, I am in favor. I will ensure that District Two is represented in the upcoming SPOST project list so that we can continue to repave streets and work diligently to expand sidewalks, bike lanes, create more streetscape improvements, and expand multi-use trail connections throughout the district. As District Two experiences increased development pressure, I will support an all-of-the-above investment approach to transportation and mobility. Um, DeKalb County has a very unique SPOST, and it's tied to the Homestead exemption, exemption. Um, one thing I think that would be very helpful, though, as it's sunsetting and the Board of Commissioners is currently thinking about SPOST and upcoming uses of those SPOST dollars, is that, um, we need to start and focus ourselves and be intentional about a comprehensive capital improvement program to guide that process. Um, it's so helpful to have an actual CIP in place and a CIP that has been, um, at least thought about through the commission, where we've sought community and put into that, where we've had planning processes about it, where we've done investigation to what the needs currently are and what the needs will be in the future. I think that we really need to focus on putting our priorities first, fixing what needs to be fixed now and not waiting till later. Um, there's also the DeKalb County 2050 United Unified Plan process going on, which is a comprehensive assessment of land use and transportation. I think all of that needs to be woven together and just a larger, broader process that is collaborative in spirit with the Board of Commissioners and also with the CEO, and of course, the departments in DeKalb County. And, and then certainly, we need to overlay these projects with what our municipalities plan to do as well in their upcoming years. Um, many of you guys know, and as I've been out on the campaign trail, um, there have been roads that have been repaved recently. Right now, with those SPOST dollars, we're looking at repaving about 300 miles of roads. But my goodness, folks, we have way, 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 way more than 300 miles of roads with our, um, in our community. Sidewalks all over DeKalb County, they are cracked. They are nonexistent, and that yields them unsafe for people. They're unsafe for mothers with strollers walking down the road. Thank you for the time note. Uh, they are unsafe if you're, um, an elderly person and you're walking along. Um, I was running my dog out the other day around my neighborhood and actually tripped on a crack, and my dog got in the road and almost got squashed. So that was very upsetting to me. But again, um, in, in final, my thought really is, yes, I certainly support it. And secondly, I think we need to have a robust community input process.
Thank you.
And to determining what those, uh, spending decisions are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Lauren Alexander, same question to you. Uh, the one penny SPOST sales tax will soon sunset unless the DeKalb voters approve its renewal. Are you in favor of renewing the SPOST? And if so, what will be your priorities for how the money should be spent? You have three minutes.
Thank you. And I apologize for the sun behind me. Um.
Your camera is not on, actually, so.
Okay, I was trying to fix that. I apologize.
No worries.
Do you see it?
I do now. I'll restart your time. Three minutes.
Okay, can you see me now?
Uh, I can't actually see you now. No, I apologize.
Okay. Snap. Okay. I'm having a hard time. My camera is struggling.
Okay.
Should I just proceed without it?
Just go, just proceed without it for now. We can, no worries. Three, three minutes.
Yes, sorry about that. Yes, I am very much in favor of that. And I want to say, I mean, um, our infrastructure is crumbling in DeKalb, as evidenced by our water fishing, both in terms of stormwater and the efficiency, uh, the effective delivery of our water in our homes. About 30% of the water that comes from our treatment center does not make it to the houses, which, which is completely horrifying. So I would prioritize the stormwater improvement. Now, with that said, you know, you need collaboration and buy-in with the community. And with all the questions, I think, I think it's important to make sure that we are working with residents and understanding what the request is. On the campaign trail, I've heard a lot of concern and angst and consternation around water. Um, and it's time and, uh, I'm so sorry. Um, and what I think is truly critical is for us to, uh, ensure that we are having transparency with the community at large, so they understand what it is that we're asking for and what the votes are, because it could be a little difficult if people aren't clear about the benefits directly for them. And I'm done. I'm sorry. I'm gonna work on my camera. I apologize for that.
Hey, look, we've, believe me, I know all about the technical issues. We've been dealing with that this morning as well, so you're in good company. Uh, so the next question, uh, we're gonna start with Michelle Long Spears. Real, real quick question. Michelle, why are you a better candidate than your opponents? Three minutes.
All right. Um, so thank you for that question. I am, again, very, very excited to become your next Commissioner. I was approached, um, a few months ago about considering a run for this office. The reason that folks felt that I would be a very good fit for the DeKalb County Commission is that I am, I'm even tempered. I have a love for community. I lead with love. I embrace a culture of respect. I embrace a culture of response. I have been managing large, large sums of money, millions and millions of dollars, for 20 years. I have studied budgeting, uh, public budgeting at Georgia State University. I've applied those learnings with the work that I've been doing specifically recently around American Rescue Plan Act funding, which has been an interesting experience in itself. Um, I bring compassion to the County Commission. I bring a collaborative spirit where I feel that I am the right person to unify our commission. I feel that I'm also the right person that can work hand-in-hand with the CEO's office in solving our community's challenges. We have got an interesting government, the CEO-commissioned form of government. It's the only form of government like this in the, in Georgia, but it is not the only form of government in the United States. I understand that form of government. I am very proud of the way that we have our seven districts laid out with our two super commission districts. But it really does bring someone that can come in and help, help really like center everyone, bring some intentionality and bring some, just, you know, the ability to, to deep dive and think through. I also have done a great deal of community engagement work in my background. Again, another reason that folks really suggested I would be good in this role, and what brought me really here today is that I am very good at working with subject matter experts. I'm not necessarily the expert in everything, and nobody is. But what I am great at is I'm able to go out and find the experts, and we're able to sit down and talk about it, kind of figure out what the problems are. Then I'm also exceptional at bringing together people from the ground, thank you, Dan, from the ground, from those that are working in community on the front lines, and making sure we find that sweet space between the experts and those that are really in the know and those that are impacted. And so I look forward to serving as your next Board of Commit, excuse me, the DeKalb County Commission District Two Commissioner. And I know that the wisdom and the even-temperedness, the ability to think creatively, the ability to collaborate is what's needed on the DeKalb Commission today. Thank you.
Uh, Lauren Alexander, glad to see, uh, we got the camera issue worked out. Uh, same question to you. Uh, what makes you a better candidate than your opponents? You have three minutes.
Thank you. And I apologize. My camera is kind of going in and out, so.
No worries.
Sorry about, well, first of all, you know, uh, yes, I, I, you know, did not have the runway that Michelle had in terms of being able to think about this for several months and/or, uh, be handpicked by the incumbent. Um, but I have a strong, long history, 25 years in service. And so, uh, I have not been a part of the system. I view this very exclusively from a place of, from a place of, um, as, as, as truly somebody who lives in the community and is concerned for how we currently function in terms of trying to support the community. Okay? And as it stands right now, the great ideas, the initiatives, the things that are coming forth aren't even getting a chance to get any type of airtime because of the personalities and the quagmire that's currently in place. And so I very real, real time and recently have worked on trying to build a plane in the air, working for the COVID Task Force. And when I tell you, you think government like this at the local level is difficult, try working with local, state, and federal at the same time, under a pressure cooker situation, when we're dealing with a global pandemic. Okay? So that particular experience has beyond given me, uh, the patience of Job, that people have said, uh, that I, I tend to exhibit. I'm extremely organized. I can multitask. You know, the budgets that I've had to look at are beyond anything that anyone probably on this, uh, phone, I say respectfully, have had to deal with and look at. And you had to do it in a warp speed and be mindful that we needed to engage with the public, uh, timely, respectfully, and efficiently. And so I've done this for a long time. I'm new, and I come from a perspective of somebody who, I'm about service first. I'm about serving the people and working for the community, not the county. Thank you.
Uh, Marshall Orson, same question to you. Three minutes. What makes you a better candidate than your opponents?
Thank you, Dan. I can really only speak to myself. I am quite certain that either my opponents would do yeoman's work on the commission and bring experiences I don't have. So I can only speak about the experience I've had, um, in my, particularly in my 10 years on the Board of Education, which has been quite a ride, as I talked about earlier, about the situation we found ourselves in when I joined the board and where we are now. And honestly, with some continuing challenges. But I have had the experience of managing a multi-billion-dollar budget at this point, of overseeing an institution that has 15,000 employees, is the second-largest employer after, that has the second-largest police department, one, if not the largest property owner, so forth. These are experiences that are, that are really relevant. But I've also been in a situation in which we have been the object and the target for everybody, particularly during the COVID crisis in there. Think about it. Uh, we had people demanding we open the schools. We had people demanding we not open schools. We had people demanding we have masks. We had people demanding we not have, and so on and so forth. At the same time, we are the object of every cultural wedge issue that has taken place. So we have the state legislature telling us what we can teach, what we can say, even where our children can go to the bathroom. That's an issue that the County Commission doesn't deal with. That experience is, I think, is unique in coming to the table in this election, because we have been under the glare of attacks by every corner, and we have had to fend them off while also staying focused on our mission, which was to educate children, which was to ensure that we are building quality, safe building materials, that is, infrastructure. The same sorts of crumbling infrastructure issues that are being faced in the county, we have been faced in the school district. We have had to deal with issues of public safety and whether ensuring that there is both order but a conducive learning environment for our children is very similar to ensuring that there is a safe community, but people also feel safe, not just. Not just in terms of crime, but in terms of their relationship with the broader community and those who are enforcing the law. There are a lot of those societal issues that show up in the schools that I have been dealing with every single day. In fact, I served as the Chair of the Board at the onset of the COVID crisis. And believe me, that was something I wasn't expecting when I stood for election. Lastly, I am the only candidate who is from, living in the unincorporated part of DeKalb County. And the county is your primary service provider in the unincorporated part. If you've got a problem with a sidewalk in Decatur or Brookhaven, you can call your city government and they'll address it. You have a problem in the unincorporated part, you got to call the county government. And we know that that is a problem in so many cases in terms of the service delivery. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, no, there will be no penalties for going under time, by the way. So if y'all, uh, the, the, if, the quicker y'all are, the more questions we can get to. But I do want to give you ample time to answer all the questions. So the next question, we're going to start with, uh, Lauren Alexander. Uh, the question is, the Board of Commissioners has decision-making ability over zoning. These decisions impact the cost of housing and the stability of neighborhoods. What changes would you make in land use and zoning policy, if any? Three minutes, uh, for Lauren Alexander.
Thank, thank you. Uh, in terms of land use and zoning, I would like to go. Developers are coming in. Listen, developers are going to come. They're going to come. They're going to want to be a part of community to make their money. Uh, but there needs to be, uh, you know, we give you this, you, what do you give us? And I'd like to make sure that if they like to play and work in DeKalb County in terms of building and developing, that they are, um, having to, uh, pay for or pay into some of the things that are currently, are pain points for the county. Uh, the infrastructure issues and making, uh, being a part of, uh, excuse me, contributing to some of those areas that will be with their expansion, uh, a drain on the society and drain on the, on the current structure, um, already in place. Those are the things that I would advocate strongly for. And I would work with the community to make sure that in fact, that they feel good about that and have input. Excuse me, with some, some of those decisions, excuse me. I'm done. Excuse me.
Quite all right. Um, Marshall Orson, same question to you. I'll, I'll abbreviate it for the sake of time. What changes would you make to county land use and zoning policy? You have three minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dan. I, I want to start with a, I think an important premise is that we have a comprehensive plan for land use in this county. And so I don't think most people understand that. But we have declared that there are a set of values about what we will develop, where it will be developed and what it has to look like when it's developed. And so I think that starting premise has to be where we depart from. What are the changes to your point we want to make? But let's understand that we are not starting from scratch. And we have to overlay that, the kinds of values that we are trying to achieve as a result of this plan. So for example, we know, and I think all of us know, that affordable housing is a critical issue for DeKalb County. The problem is in, in a heated up environment and economy, affordable housing built from scratch is going to be a very, very big challenge. And particularly in areas where there are increasing land prices. So developers are, are far less likely to come into areas where they're already having to spend a lot of money to acquire them. And then much more money to build something and to be able to come up with something that really equates to affordable housing. So I think our land use plan also has to match our affordable housing plan. It has to recognize, for example, that we have housing that can be rehabilitated, that can be turned into quality housing and therefore made affordable. We have to look at some of the restrictions we have of size and placement. Now, we want to preserve the integrity of neighborhoods, but we also have to balance that out with achieving increased affordability for a large part of our population. So in finding the specific changes, and I am not an expert in this area, but I do understand these broad considerations about balancing neighborhood integrity with the need to expand affordability and access, that the county commission, not just through the plan, but through its development authority and incentives it provides, can do things to make sure that neighborhoods that exist and, and that are already attractive, that we can also increase the number of attractive neighborhoods. And, and one of the ways to do that is to incentivize the things you need around a neighborhood. So quality, affordable housing is important, but you need to make sure that houses are not in food deserts. They're not in health deserts, that they don't, that they have green space. You need the quality of life item that the county commission in particular can help develop. They can ensure that there are parks. They can ensure that there are quality sidewalks. They can ensure that the streets are maintained. That's a holistic approach to what happens to ensure that the master yet land use plan meets not only the expectations of people, but also meets the needs of the people who live in DeKalb County.
Thank you. Michelle Long Spears, uh, question. What changes would you make in county land use and zoning policy? Three minutes. You're, you're on mute. You're muted, Michelle.
All right, I'm back. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Get static and I didn't want to interrupt.
No worries. Three minutes.
All right. So, um, yes, I believe that DeKalb can do a lot better job in our administrative processes, including zoning permitting and enforcement. In fact, um, one of the major responsibilities of a commissioner is quote unquote, "to regulate land use by the adoption of a comprehensive development plan and by the adoption of other planning and zoning ordinances", which relate reasonably to the public health, safety, morality, general welfare of the county and its citizens. Provided, however, no planning or zoning ordinance shall become law unless approved by the member of the commission representing the district in which the subject property is located or by one of the members of the commission elected from the county at large. And that is directly from our organizational act, which is commonly referred to as the county charter. So I think it's important for everyone to know specifically what is the responsibility of a commissioner as it relates to zoning. Zoning is, in my opinion, the number one responsibility of the commissioners. Even the CEO can't touch zoning. The biggest thing to understand about zoning is it shapes our future in so, so many ways. We understand the aspects of DeKalb zoning, um, zoning code is antiquated. It's old. It might be a little out of date and many, many folks have expressed that to me along the campaign trail. However, it must be brought to current standards and where we're at in 2022, DeKalb County. I'm going to fight to protect our neighborhoods, but I also want to work with neighbors to design the DeKalb that we want in our future, the neighborhood of their future. The good news is that we're in the midst of a unified development planning process right now. And that planning process does combine land use and transit planning. So I think it was an exceptional, um, journey for our current Board of Commissioners to go on with combining both of those processes. Um, this, those processes, as they're working on them, whenever we roll into office in January, 2022, we'll still be involved in that planning process. And also it'll be, of course, ongoing planning. And also with the execution of it for decades to come. We, um, must implement these changes, any zoning changes that we make with our constituents in mind, with their input, with the input of other stakeholders. One of the most beautiful things about DeKalb County are the residents that make up DeKalb, are the businesses that are in DeKalb County. And some of those businesses are developers. They're people in the growth industry. Another thought I have before I wrap up is that we can work on these, um, small area plans in 2023 after we determine how we're going to, um, handle some of our land use issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, so we're going to start the next question with Marshall Orson. Uh, Marshall, what is your opinion of efforts to create new cities in DeKalb County? You have three minutes. You're on mute, by the way.
Thank you.
No problem.
It will be the line we all carry with us post pandemic, whenever we reach that. You know, cities are continuing to grow. They're growing both by new cities and by annexations. This is an area I have dealt with extensively on the Board of Education. Uh, in large part in order to protect the, the interests and the assets and the needs of the students of the DeKalb County schools when there have been annexations by either Atlanta or the city of Decatur. I also constantly see the efforts around the expansion of the newer cities. And what I have really noticed is the conflict between those cities and often county commissions. It's an unhelpful conflict. It has been ever present and it continues to this day. One of the things I've had to do as a member of the Board of Education is collaborate with everybody. Because we have to educate every child in DeKalb County. So whether a child lives in unincorporated DeKalb, or they live in the city of Brookhaven or Shambly, everywhere but the city of Atlanta or Decatur, it is our responsibility to educate that child. And so we have had to recognize that there are interests by those cities as well as the county. Why is that relevant to new cities? Because there is a, an interest of people deciding what government they want to manage their services. As I mentioned before, you live in the unincorporated area like me, my services are almost entirely provided by the county. You live in the city of Brookhaven or Decatur, most of your services are provided by one of those cities. That's a very big difference. As cities expand or new ones are created though, it is in all our interest to ensure that we have a healthy county government. So we have to make sure that in any discussions about the creation of new cities or the expansion of existing ones, that we can agree on a model that is going to work for county government. Because county government is still going to provide some services like water and sewer, the crumbling infrastructure we have talked about. We also need to have a forum for collaboration. So what happens on the edges, either between the county and the cities or between these cities? We have a master plan that by law is limited primarily to the county. But we don't have overall agreement about development among and between the cities and the county. We run a really very real risk of having not only uneven development through the county, but also unsustainable development. So I understand that city development will continue in all likelihood. We can see what happened in Fulton County. We're almost all of it is now in this, uh, in a city. But we have to ensure that there are robust conversations between the county and the cities and the state legislature to ensure that what remains is viable and that we do not take so many resources away from the county that the county is unable to service any populations that remain in unincorporated areas.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle Long Spears, same question to you. Three minutes. What is your opinion of efforts to create new cities in DeKalb County?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, forgive me. I just heard a little bit of static in the background. Um, so this is a question that I sincerely get every single day since I have been on the campaign trail. So thank you for asking it. The county's basic services are law enforcement, sanitation, water, libraries, fire, parks and rec, and maintenance of county facilities. When municipalities or when people are considering forming a city, so this whole cityhood movement that's going on in DeKalb County, they really need to take a look at what does their specific community need. Cityhood is a complex issue. I have been involved with cityhood for over a decade now. When I was in grad school a second time, I worked on a, and completed a Master of Public Policy at GSU. Um, I was in a demography class and our project for my group was studying cityhood. And what we found after we did a national scan, that the trend was only happening in DeKalb County. A few months after that, we were contacted by the AJC who adopted some of our research for an article that they were doing on the trend of cityhood in DeKalb County. And so it's, it's something that's been going on for an extended period of time now. The issues are loss of tax revenue for county and schools. And so, you know, as we're thinking through the new potential cities, there's two new potential cities right now. And one, of course, will impact us here up in our area, the city of North Decatur. We need to just make sure that we're cognizant of what people that reside in that currently unincorporated area really want. And so I would strongly support a community input process into that. So the notion of the city of North Decatur was introduced late in legislative session. Um, my understanding is that two of our senators actually support it. And so they actually have given quite a runway, um, to go and talk to not just them, but everyone. And also work with, um, other informed groups about what cityhood looked like. The good, bad and ugly of cityhood, as I said earlier, I moved into unincorporated DeKalb. Um, I was annexed into city of Shambly. So we didn't form a city, but there were some, some similarities there getting used to a city as well. And so I, I myself understand the good, bad and ugly, the pros and cons of cityhood versus living in unincorporated. Folks that are interested in cityhood, what I've learned is that they're frustrated with service levels. They're not getting what they want. Uh, and sometimes that relates to law enforcement and sometimes it's other county services. And then residents who don't want to live in unincorporated, or excuse me, in a municipality, they just don't want another layer of government, one. And then there are other various reasons. I'm time bound, so I can't go too deeply into it.
Thank you.
And so, um, I suggest that, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I do, uh, I do want to say this is that no matter what happens, the decision's in the hand of our voters and I'll work with whatever decision the voters decide on.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Lauren Alexander, same question to you. Uh, you're on mute, by the way. Three minutes. Uh, what is your opinion of efforts to create new cities in DeKalb County?
So like a lot of things, I would start, first of all, when I moved to the city of Decatur, it was already a city. Um, I've had firsthand the benefits of, uh, you know, a city that works very, very well. But for those that are looking to have it and that, um, are very much interested in it, I want to understand what their pain points are and why it is they think that this is necessary. This is the residents and understanding what they think they need that they are currently not receiving from the county. What differences they think will happen by having a city? And if they really understand what it, uh, requires and what it will entail to actually develop and can, uh, develop a new city. And that would be, we could immediately point to Brookhaven and city of Decatur in terms of, what it looked like for them, uh, in, uh, as, as it pertains to setting up the city, their cities. What it required of the citizens to be on board for that. And making sure that we truly are truly touching base with those who are actually at the table and those who are not. Those who don't even have an opportunity to be a part of the dialogue because their current life situation doesn't allow them, uh, the luxury of being involved in this conversation just because they're simply too busy just trying to live. Their voice matters too. And we need to make sure that we're creating a space to include them in this dialogue. I do think that there's some value to it. However, that needs to be very well balanced with, uh, the citizens that will both best be served. And overall, what the county is doing and how we can better serve the citizens respective, irrespective of those, those decisions being made. I think it's critical that we function holistically and thoughtfully. And we can do that by having different leadership that's not wedded to their positions and actually look at all these things as an opportunity for growth.
Thank you. Uh, next question, we're going to start with, uh, Michelle Long Spears. Michelle, how and when should the DeKalb County Development Authority use, uh, tax breaks, incentives to encourage development? Three minutes.
So, um, one of the areas that I get a lot of question on is around these tax breaks and incentives. And the film industry, for example, you know, that's something that we have provided incentives at a state level. And it certainly had an impact here in DeKalb County as well. Um, there has been, I live in the city of Brookhaven, which, um, everyone knows. And there has been a lot of controversy, um, between Brookhaven and the DeKalb Commission around tax abatement. And so the tax abatement issue is, it's a really, really complex issue and it's a tough issue. And so I, I really try, as I, as I stand back and I'm trying to kind of digest, you know, what's the friction? What's going on? Is that, you know, why is, why is that happening? And so I see when you're looking at providing a tax break or providing a tax incentive is that it is an attraction issue, right? It helps attract, attract development and attract residents to our community. But on the flip side, like in life, right, there's always often a sacrifice. And that sacrifice has to do with some of the revenue we get from our taxes. And so, you know, I would suggest that the authority, you know, continue to really just take a deep dive into these issues. And number one, make sure is that the, the needs of our constituents, the needs of our residents remains and always should remain the number one priority. To make sure that our communities and our service levels are supported by the dollars that we get in our communities. And then also in saying that as well, is that when there are municipalities that are looking at offering a tax abatement scenario to developers is to make sure that there really is a reason to do that and not just offer the, the tax abatement because you can, but because there's a reason that it needs to be offered. Because again, it's a development that the, thank you very much, that the citizens want, that it nicely weaves into their existing community. Whether that's they want a mixed use community because they want to be able to walk to retail, or they want to walk to restaurants. Or if it's something that is going to disturb or break up their neighborhood, which might be a reason that they would oppose it. So I would hope certainly that all influential authorities, boards, board of commissioners, CEOs, really listen. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say they should be aware and they should have a huge benefit. And tax breaks are really needed where land is hard to be developed, which is not the current situation in Brookhaven and Decatur, generally speaking. Excuse me. And with that said, there needs to be a direct correlation as to any of these incentives, if you will. I actually struggle with the incentive piece of it. Being tied to the things that currently pain us as a county. So if that's infrastructure, if that's affordable housing, if that's the unhoused, all of those things to be yoked in there to make sure that the benefit for them is truly a benefit for us. And that we're growing from the fact that they're here and they need what they think they need and wanted to play in this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I'm going to adopt much of what Lauren just said because philosophically it aligns with much of my thinking. I've actually had to deal with tax abatements on a persistent and consistent basis because the reality is that most of the money in these abatements comes out of the school district. There is, we are the largest collector of property taxes and therefore when there's an abatement, the largest abatement is against the taxes we collect. It's a concerning situation because that impacts our ability to deliver services to our students. Now, there is a notion that the school district is just opposed to any kind of tax incentive financing. I think quite frankly, we have not conveyed very clearly where we stand. To your, and this is really relevant to your question, because I think the primary use of tax incentives should be to encourage development where development isn't occurring. And not to reward development where it's likely to occur. So most of these tax incentive ideas have happened very much in my school board district, District Two, which overlaps with the commission district, in the areas of Northwood Hills, along Brookhaven, at the edge with Brook, with the city of Brookhaven, on Briar Cliff and so forth. And often these incentives are stated in terms of trying to provide affordable housing, but, but that's a little deceiving. Because affordable housing in those contexts are defined by market rate. So if you're going to create market rate or affordable housing at eighty percent of market rate and the rent is $2,000, you're still talking about $1,600, which is not affordable to a large number of our citizens. So the DeKalb Development Authority has a job to do. But what people need to understand is that often what the DeKalb Development Authority is doing, along with the Brookhaven Development Authorities and the others, is they're competing with each other to get credit for a deal. So what drives the incentive is as much about who gets credit for the deal, it can rebate fees to their underlying government as much as it is about the sense behind the incentive. So I've, I have led the effort at times to legally challenge some of these incentives. Because I thought that they were not healthy for the school district, but more importantly, they weren't appropriate for the development use that was being proposed. So I think we need to focus on the things that will drive development to areas where we are struggling to get development so that all our residents and citizens can participate in the economic growth of the county. I think we also need to have a structure that pushes these multiple development authorities to sit down at the table and create a blueprint for how they will work, not in competition with each other, but in support of each other so that we have robust but more even development throughout the county. And we have the kind of development and the kind of incentive provision that doesn't take so much money out of things like our school district that we harm and impair the ability of the school district to do its job.
Thank you. So we are coming up on the end of an hour because we have some technical difficulties. I'm going to extend this one by five minutes. I think all the candidates are okay with that. So I'm going to start with Lauren Alexander for our last question before we get to opening, closing statements. Lauren, what do you think is the best decision DeKalb County has made within the last four years? And what do you think is the worst decision the DeKalb County Commission has made in the last four years? You have three minutes.
Wow, best and worst decision. Okay. I actually think that I have been very impressed with how they handled COVID. I think that they did a great job in terms of entire, the entire county. I think that they did a good job of managing the crisis, responding to the needs of, of the community with very little information and rapid response for all those, those that are able to access information and services quickly and those that are not. I think although they are working towards doing stuff for the unhoused, I think there's more to do. And in terms of decisions, I'm not sure that there actually has been a decision. I know right now that things have, they've been, they've been, they have, as a collective, have had the opportunity to address unhoused. And in some instances have punted on it. And, you know, that personally is something, that's something very important to me and it matters. They are in fact residents of this, of this county. And I'd like to see more focus on how we make, this is very vulnerable and often, of course, marginalized community and population be woven in in a meaningful way and get services they need so that they can function and exist and not. Let's just leave it right there.
Okay. Marshall Orson, same question to you. What do you think is the best decision the DeKalb County Commission has made in the last four years? And what do you think is the worst decision the DeKalb County Commission has made in the last four years? You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you, Dan. You know, I struggle a little bit to, you know, rank order decisions from one to a hundred or whatever they are, because I think every decision can be scrutinized at a certain level as to whether people like it or don't like it, given their own interest. And so I'm more focused on process and the assets we have in terms of getting to decisions. Because any single decision, I, I live with this every day on the school board, can be perceived as a really good decision or a really terrible decision. And I'm living that particularly this week, quite frankly. So my, my best part is about us having the, the parts to put together to make a decision. Right? So we, you know, there's much talk about whether we should reform the county government, but we do have the parts now. Engaged county commission, we have an engaged CEO. We have a robust library system. We have some services that I think do well and some services that are are not, are so underperforming that everybody is singularly frustrated. And so to me, the best is that there, there's a blueprint for putting together an effective and efficient county government. But we have to overlay with that the kinds of policies and investments that focus on customer service, that focus on getting results, focus on making sure the government is responsive and not just a bureaucracy that is meant to either be gotten around or just dealt with and with all the pain that comes with it. This is sort of the, the opposite side on the worst side, which is that we are very fractured right now. Particularly on the county commission with two factions that, as a result of the way some county commissioners are approaching decision-making and relationships are making it very difficult for us to advance together as a county. Fact of the matter is that disagreements, you have to try to minimize making them personal. And sometimes you can, you know, we're all human. But we have to find a way that our county commissioners are encouraged to collaborate. Yes, the charter may give some authority to individual county commissioners to make a decision in their district. That's okay, but that's not necessarily the best way for decision making. The best way for decision making is to have a shared set of values and a shared set of objectives that will benefit the most citizens and try not to leave any citizens out of the, the equation. And so one of the things I think we need is, we need more collaboration. And it's what I've been doing for 10 years, particularly with other governments, collaborating with the county commissioner, collaborating with city commissioners and city council. And we're not there yet in terms of our county commission. But it's where I hope to take us if I am given the honor of serving you as your county commissioner.
Thank you. Michelle Long Spears, what do you think is the best decision the DeKalb County Commission has made in the last four years? And what do you think is the worst decision? You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. So DeKalb County's greatest strength is without a doubt are a beautiful and amazing diversity of people, talents, and passions. We've got an astounding array of people that live in DeKalb from different backgrounds, religions, ethnicities, nations of origins, all of those calling DeKalb home. But we want to be sure that all of us that call DeKalb home is that we have got the high quality level of services that we all expect. And so not for best, I believe that investing in water and sewer and infrastructure is something that we have been, we've made a priority and we're very intentional and we have a plan on how we're doing that. I think worst is unfortunately that we have not acted on the affordable housing report that was completed by Emory three years ago. And so regarding the best, which is around the water and sewer overhaul. So I'll work to ensure that the $2 billion is implemented in a fiscally efficient and environmentally responsible way that embraces equitable labor and procurement processes. When I'm out and about talking to folks, the sewer issue just continues to come up again and again and again. I have unfortunately experienced the bad side of a sewer issue as well in my life in the last couple of years. And several other folks also expressed it in some very colorful words at what ended up in their lawns or in their homes. So I think that the CEO's office, and I'm, you know, I'm very excited about his focus on that. And I also think that the commissioners in support of that as well. I think the county has got, you know, a lot of infrastructure investments that they really need to kind of hone in on, on roads, bridges, trails, sidewalks, roundabouts and parks and stormwater, but certainly the sewer is, is number one. Housing access and affordability is and will always be a top priority for me. I am committed to the development of a land trust. I have worked with land trust in my past. I see the value of land trust and I really think that it's something that can really help us solve, at least one of the things that can help us solve some of our housing challenges. I think that we also need to be very creative in housing and start thinking a little bit out of the box at what DeKalb is going to look like in 20 years. And how we're going to manage the density of DeKalb. And we already have a very dense district too. It's the, it's been the fastest growing district in terms of development of all the districts. And so the housing and affordability issue is, is got to be key for us because it is in crisis mode.
Thank you.
I would certainly support a very intentional focus on the board of commissioners into housing.
We got, we got just enough time to make our closing statements. I apologize. So I'm going to give each of you two minutes. I'm not going to cry if we, we get through them pretty quickly. Marshall Orson, we're going to start with you. You have two minutes to make a closing statement.
All right. Thank you, Dan. And thank you again for hosting this event. And to those of you who are watching or will see it subsequently on video. I am running for the county commission because I have spent 10 years working for this county at a very high level in terms of managing the school district. With the largest budget in the county, with the second largest workforce, with the challenges that we have seen right through the county, both with the county government and the school district, I've had to deal with many of these issues day to day. It's experience that is directly relevant to what goes on at the county commission. I've also seen pathways to improvement. We've done better outcomes in the school district. But we accredited with a $100 million plus fund balance improvements and outcomes, though they've been challenged by the COVID crisis. We know that there is a pathway to improve. I think perhaps the most valuable part of my experience has been I have had to work with other government officials, both at the county and cities, and understand what a collaborative model works, looks like in terms of getting the best results for our citizens. And I would hope, I hope that you will give me the opportunity. I would be honored to have it to bring that experience to the benefit, not only to the citizens of District Two, but for all of DeKalb County. And as a resident of unincorporated DeKalb, I will be particularly focused on understanding that we are not only responsible for things that are countywide, like water and sewer, but for the service delivery that is otherwise provided to those who live in cities. It doesn't happen for county residents except by the county government. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I hope there will be an opportunity to earn your vote in this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Long Spears, ooh, somebody has me loud and on echo. Okay. Michelle Long Spears, you have two minutes to make a closing statement.
Great. Thank you so much. Again, I appreciate everybody tuning in today. And I'm very excited to be working hard for the May 24th primary to become your next DeKalb County Commissioner. The three areas that I'm really focused on is preserving neighborhoods, ensuring quality services and making sure that we embrace transparent, ethical, good government. I am a person who truly believes in strong leadership. I am a strong leader. I feel that the commission needs a voice of reason, a culture of respect, and a commitment to respond to all citizens. We need to be accountable to the folks that live here and to the businesses that are in our community. I am a diplomatically direct person. I do not dance around the bush. I get to the root of the problem. I bring in subject matter experts as needed. I am a good listener. I listen to people. And I will deep dive, roll up my sleeves to solve community challenges and make sure that our constituents, our residents, our businesses are being taken care of to meet their expectations. I've lived in DeKalb since 2008. I am a very proud DeKalb resident. I have a track record and success in multi-sector collaboration. I've worked with the private sector, the public sector, and the social sector on solving very complex community challenges. I apply an ethics lens. I apply an equity lens and apply a systems change lens to addressing those challenges, the systemic challenges that we have in our community. And as your next commissioner, I will also apply all three of those lenses to make sure that we're fully taken care of as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Alexander, you have the last word. Two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I've really, I've enjoyed this. I've learned a lot. And, you know, I, as I mentioned before, that, you know, this is my first time running, but it's not my first time serving. You know, it's what I do. It's what I believe. I've loved, loved, loved living in my community. And I'd love to have the opportunity to serve them as their commissioner. Focusing on ensuring the health, that healthy futures for our children is one of the reasons why I'm running for DeKalb County Commissioner. And, you know, happy children need happy parents and happy parents need communities and governments that work efficiently for them. And this looks like having solutions to mitigate and tackle infrastructure issues, improving safety and creating smart city growth. And creating smart city growth. Um, we deserve, all of us deserve to have an efficient responsive government. That will provide good value for our tax dollars, improve our quality of life and move DeKalb forward into the twenty first century. I am temperamentally uh very even. Um, I am extremely hardworking. I am nimble. I can synthesize information quickly and learn. I wasn't planning on doing this. I was tapped and asked and encouraged by people who've seen the things that I've done for the last twenty five years. Knowing that, you know, oftentimes women are encouraged to step into the public sphere. I'm a mother. And so I, I'm, and I'm a black woman and this community needs diversity. It needs somebody that um understands the pain points. Of the entire community. So thank you so much for your support. If you want to know about more about me, please go to LaurenforDeKalb.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you and thank all of our candidates, one for attending this forum and, and giving the readers a chance to hear more about you. Also for uh putting up with some of our technical challenges early on. Uh, and everybody's got them, uh, but we, we got through them. So that's a good thing. Uh, so we are going to be back in a little under an hour uh with the candidates running for District Three. That is going to start uh same time, uh same, not same time, but same place here in the Decatur's Twitch channel. Uh, I am your host, editor and publisher, DanWizzenHunt.com. If you have appreciated this forum, if you appreciate the coverage that we do, both on uh DecaterationTuckerObserver.com. Please, please visit SupportMyLocalNews.com and become a paying supporter today. You can do that for as little as three bucks a month. Uh, I also found out that Support Your Local News expired, so I bought that too and sent it to the same place, just because I'm, I'm crafty like that. Uh, so anyway, thank everybody for watching. I hope you have a good rest of your day and we'll see you back here at eleven o'clock. Bye bye, everybody.
Bye bye.